Part of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Texas Southmost College District. Trustees present tonight are Ms. Adela Garza, Dr. Robert Lozano, Mr. Trey Mendez. Mr. David Oliveira will not be present today, he says he has court in Edinburgh and will be out of Brownsville for the week, and also Mr. Torres called and said he would not be able to make it, I don't know if we're expecting Dr. Robles, we're not sure about Dr. Robles. Also present is Dr. Lily Tercero, President of Texas Southmost College. Announcements, I call on Dr. Lily Tercero to make the announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm very pleased to announce tonight that Dr. Robert Guero, our Vice President, has been reappointed to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's Undergraduate Education Advisory Committee. That's a very, very important committee because it's actually the committee that has been working on recommending a new core curriculum statewide. He was actually appointed at the time and worked with the group and they did a new curriculum committee, a new core curriculum, but they've been brought back to do more work. And so he's been reappointed, so I'm really pleased that he is, that he can stay abreast of some of the key areas at that level. Robert, congratulations, and I'm so glad that you're serving on that committee. On another very sad note, I regret to inform everyone, you may know, you may not know, that Dr. Alberto Alfonso Bestero has passed away. Dr. Bestero was a proud native son of Brownsville, of those of you that don't know him, he was very committed to his community, and actually becoming President of Texas Southmost College where he served here for eight years was what he accomplished. So we're very saddened to hear that. We will be bringing forth with Board a full resolution honoring him at the April meeting, and we are sending a letter to his founding for condolences and asking him, hopefully there'll be someone who'll be here to accept the resolution. But we in the college community are very saddened by his passing, and I just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you, sir, those are my remarks.
Thank you. I have another three public comments, do we have any public comments? I call on Mr. Dino Chavez. Mr. Chavez, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board, my name is Dino Chavez, I am a local businessman. I represent a company called National MGA Insurance Alliance. We've been around quite a while, I've been in the insurance business for a pretty long time, almost 20 years. The reason I'm here today is to talk about, just briefly, some insurance proposals that you were considering today. I know there's at least one insurance proposal that theoretically, all rates from any insurance agent should be the same, because the quoting entity, an entity called the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association, provides the same quotes for all agents, so there's theoretically no difference between any rates that you get from the same entity. The one big difference is that we were one of the entities that submitted for consideration, and I believe we're the only entity that's within your taxing district, so we appreciate some consideration in that. The second thing is that something that may or may not be in your packet of consideration is an added value item that we've included, which is to put together a report that analyzes the condition of all your buildings, so that when you go forward into the future, you can look at the condition of the roofs, pictures of the roofs, et cetera. And that is something that we will do free of charge as part of our proposal, and it's included in our proposal, so that you can use it in your planning as you go into the future, not only for insurance matters, but also for planning and maintenance matters that have to do with all your buildings. There's many, many buildings that you all have, and it doesn't take very many of them to, when you gotta do some replacements, to actually add a significant amount of money to the budget. So that's an added value that we add. And so I only got three minutes, so I'm gonna limit what I say, but I do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Next item, mission statement. Texas Southmost College is a comprehensive, open admissions, public community college whose mission comports with the state statutes, Subchapter A, Section 130. Texas Southmost College offers programs leading to certificates of completion and associate's degrees, developmental education to prepare students for college-level work, occupational and technical programs to prepare students for immediate employment, academic courses of study to develop the core skills, understandings, and knowledge appropriate for baccalaureate programs, and continued education, counseling, guidance, adult literacy, and personal enrichment. Texas Southmost College advances economic and social development, enhances the quality of life, encourages respect for the environment, cultivates personal enrichment, expands knowledge in service to its community. It convenes the cultures of its community and fosters an appreciation for the unique heritage of the Lower Rio Grande Valley. It provides academic leadership in the intellectual, social, cultural, and economic life of the region it serves. Texas Southmost College places excellence in teaching and learning at the core of its commitments. It seeks to help students at all levels develop the skills which will sustain lifelong learning while respecting the dignity of each learner and the needs of the entire community. Next item, consideration, an approval of meeting minutes of the February 29, 2012 meeting. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Mendez to approve the meeting minutes of the February 29, 2012 meeting. Do I have a second?
I can't, I was abstained.
I have a second by Dr. Lozano, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
We have one abstention, motion is approved. Consideration and approval proposal for windstorm and hail property insurance, I call on Mr. Chet Lewis, Vice President for Administration and Finance, to present the item. Mr. Lewis?
Chairman and Board of Trustee members, and Dr. Tercero. You have a lot of information in your packet, so I'm gonna try to give you a brief overview to make sense of volumes of data. As you remember, UT System used to provide our insurance for fire and other apperils, and also for excess coverage of wind, and also they would have been providing excess coverage on flood. We had participated in that pool with them for a period of five years, and as we were going through the termination, they gave us notice last year that we would not be participating in this beyond this year. The policies end March 31st, and so we need to establish new policies by April 1st. When we're looking at the wind, there's two aspects of wind. The first is covered by the Texas Windstorm Insurance Agency, and they will ensure buildings up to a certain point, that maximum is this year 4.424 million dollars per occurrence per building. Beyond that, you have to look at procuring excess wind coverage. For example, the Finarts Building is worth over 25 million dollars between the building and its contents. TUIA would only cover, or the Texas Wind Insurance Agency, it's called TUIA, it would only cover 4.4 million, and so you would have to purchase additional coverage in case there's a disaster that took it beyond those type of limits. And so that's why we look at the two items. The way the UT System pool had worked is that we would purchase the TUIA, and historically have purchased the TUIA in an agent that we brokered through the college, and then we were participating with UT System beyond that point. So I wanna start off talking about the TUIA coverage, and then we'll move on to the excess wind coverage. We've had three bidders bidding on the TUIA coverage. TUIA is provided through the state of Texas, and you're gonna see that we have three differing bids for the TUIA coverage. We also bid these on different increments with different deductibles. If the bids were put in exactly the same, the premium would be the same, because the pricing would be the same. You're gonna see the amounts of 827,789 for RN Jones Agency, that's the current agency that we currently have our TUIA coverage through, and that's at the 1% deductible level. We have the Clement Agency, they're listed out of Prosper, Texas, which is up in the Dallas area, but they have an association with an agency here in Brownsville, so they put in a bid at 837,306. The reason that we have a difference in those two bids is, we provided the spreadsheet, and there were four items in the category of the wind coverage for the building, as far as the rating structure. Buildings are rated on whether they're wind resistant, semi-wind resistant, brick, heavy construction, I think the other one is frame. There were four items in our spreadsheet that had not been updated. If they had been updated, the RN Jones bid and the Clement Agency bid would have looked exactly the same. The Texas Insurance Service Center is at 859,074, and we found that there was a number of misclassifications off the spreadsheet that we had provided. At this time, when we're looking at the various amounts for the deductibles, we asked for the proposal of a 1% deductible, the 2%, that 5%, and then RN Jones also gave an alternate proposal. We feel it's in the best interest of the college to go ahead and stay with our current policy, which is consistent of having a 1% deductible, and that the pricing for that would be at the 827,789. We reviewed the agency's qualifications, they all appear very qualified, and all things being equal, we've had good experience with the RN Jones Agency, and we would recommend a continuation with them because of the years of service that we've had with them, and they have actually, I was told through UT System that they had gone through and found some savings in previous years for us. However, it's up to you to make the decision on which policy you'd be interested. The second one that's up for consideration is the excess wind insurance, and you'll see that we only had one bidder on that, it was Shepherd Walton King. And essentially, when you look at TUIA, the coverage is by building and by occurrence, and with excess wind coverage, it's a blanket coverage over all of the facilities that we have. One of the things that was brought to our attention, that Shepherd Walton King had gone out to the market and procured interest in providing our wind coverage in January, and some of the agents found that they were not able to produce a bid. In a perfect world, I'd like to go back and rebid that, so everyone has an equal chance, however, it would probably take 60 to 90 days to get another policy. So at this point, I think it would behoove us to go ahead and accept one of the bids that we do have here, and look at rebidding this next year. The amounts that we have for coverage there is 359,316.75 for 50 million dollars of excess coverage, and at the 75 million dollar blanket coverage, we would have 390,789.75. One of the things that we did do, we did some due diligence to make sure that that's a fair rate, since we only had one bidder, and when I spoke with the insurance agents up at UT System, and some of the other agencies that are bidding on some of the other items, they did confirm that that seems like that is a fair rate. Also, when you look at the coverage, we're receiving similar coverage in some aspects, and in some aspects, the coverage is a little bit better, because if you recall, through the insurance pool at UT System, there's a shared risk component of a substantial amount of the coverage that we have, and this would apply 100% to us. Also, we wanted to make sure that the coverage was adequate, because the two insurance policies are different, and when we discussed this with a number of people, they felt 50 million dollars was an adequate amount of excess coverage. In fact, some school districts and some entities don't even take the excess coverage. So at this point, we would recommend that, we also include in the motion to accept the quote for the 50 million dollars of excess coverage for 359,316.75 with Shepherd Walton King.
Chet, on that, on that excess coverage, is that excess wind?
That is just excess wind, that's correct. One thing I will point out, the UT System policies were built on, for their excess coverages, it was built on the excess of TUIA, and also the excess of NFIP, and there was an assumption that we were making sure that we had carried our base NFIP, and we only have two buildings that actually have coverage on the NFIP currently, and they're the ones that are required through the Stafford Act, that they're in high peril areas, that would be at Port Isabel, I'm sorry, at South Padre Island and Port Mansfield. What I'd like to do is go back and also look at some other buildings, and bring to you a recommendation to include some of our other buildings under the NFIP program as well.
Do we know on this excess coverage, you say it's just wind coverage, you know that TUIA is gonna cover about 4 million dollars per building? So how many buildings actually exceed the 4 million dollar limit on TUIA?
I think there's about 10, 12 buildings, and I'll give you example of a few of the buildings here.
Okay. I have some information if you'd like.
Sure.
Because there's 23 buildings that go over the 4 million, basically you have six or seven big ones that are the biggest on the I- percent. Thank you, I'm Arnet Oropesa with Shepherd Walton King Insurance, thank you for allowing me to speak. Basically, your largest building over that is the 56.5 million at ITech, I realize you're not using all of that, it is replacement cost. Your next biggest one, and these are the amounts over the 4 million, is your REK Building, which is 22.2 million, in excess of what you have with TUIA. The Arts Center is 21.6 million over, the library is 11.1 million over, and then you've got the Oliveira Memorial Library at 5.9 million over, and one of the classrooms at 5.1 million over. Those are your biggest ones, you've got some smaller ones, for a total of 23 buildings over, but those are your largest buildings that go over.
And who the coverage to be with, what's the entity, the company?
Okay, it's Underwriters at Lloyd's, it's what they call AMRIS, it's Underwriters at Lloyd's, it's QB Specialty, it's Princeton, they all come on one policy, but they're all sharing the risk.
Okay.
Essentially, we had gone through and identified some of the higher amounts, and we actually, when you look at the top, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 buildings, that makes up, the TUIA coverage is covering 97,868,035. The total coverage of all of our buildings is a little over 235 million, so that means we have about a little over 137,000 that's uncovered. If you look at those seven buildings along with their contents, there's another 12 million dollars that's allocated to various buildings, but there's 10 buildings that are the primary largest buildings.
And I know that later on, I think you're gonna ask us about the other property policy in the pool?
Yes, we will be discussing that later.
Do you know if they offer excess coverage, excess wind coverage? Because sometimes those kinds of risk pool carriers actually offer excess coverage, so long as you're covered with TUIA for the max.
Along with the people that bid on the wind insurance, we're gonna be making a recommendation to you through the fire and other apperils, through a risk pool, and they do have the ability to do excess coverage. They found the same situation, the market had been essentially blocked from trying to get enough coverage to prepare an adequate response.
The policy's gonna expire in a few days?
It will expire by the end of the month.
How do these costs compare to what we had last year?
The TUIA bid, it's actually very comparable. Last year for TUIA, we had 824,066 dollars as far as the outflow, and this year it's 827,789. Now, the increase is actually a little higher than that, and the reason for that is when you look at the comparison of the buildings, I excluded the Village, because we were moving forward to the plans to potentially demolish that, so it didn't make any sense to take the TUIA coverage over the summer while we're gonna be tearing it down. Now, in relationship to the other coverage, like the fire and other apperils, and then the excess wind, that was actually combined in a premium, and the amount we were paying to UT System last year was 275,670, but compared to the policies that we're looking at, there were substantial differences in the deductibles, especially when we looked at the wind. We were looking at sections where you had a big chunk of self-insurance, and then on top of that, there was a significant layering of another deductible on top of that. So the two products are not compared apples to apples, and one of the things that it was a little bit better on the UT System policy, it has some business continuity, and so we're gonna look at the possibility of pricing that same type of function in here.
And so the difference between 827 and 837 of RN Jones and Clement, is there's a different ratings on a couple buildings?
Ultimately, when TUIA goes through and looks at those two, it will gravitate back down to the same dollar amount.
There's no, I mean, the difference, the other one is significantly higher too, but there's no agency fees or any?
All the commissions and the fees for TUIA are set exactly the same, and so every bid, once we had done the review and had done some verifications, would come in at the same dollar amount.
I just have a problem with, because we've done it this way, because we've done business with them, we're gonna retain them, but when do we give somebody else an opportunity to prove themselves, and I'm always gonna choose local.
That's a policy that could be set by the Board, if you wanted to rotate through somebody every so often, you could do that, if you wanted to pick your criteria, that's a decision you get to make tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, there really was a very close, it was a very close review, wasn't it, Chet?
Yes.
Between these two. If you so choose to go one versus the other, I think we could work either way. But looking at it from the standpoint of business continuity, it was the reason, I think, we selected to recommend the current one. But honestly, so close, you could go either way, so you know, it'll be, we could work with either. But you know, normally, when you're looking at these kinds of issues, one of the things that you look at is historical work with the entity that you've been involved with, and the continuity of maintaining the relationship. But you bring up a good point too, in terms of the opportunities to give others, so it could go either way.
If we go by, we've always done it this way, then another company never has an opportunity to prove themselves to us that they're just as good or better.
To me, it doesn't matter who the company is, it really matters who the insurer is, it's all the same, I think, for an agency, as long as they combine the policy. After that, you deal with an insurance company. Earlier, you mentioned something about recommending next year to bid out again, which one were you talking about?
The excess wind insurance, I had a number of people express concern that they felt like they didn't have the opportunity to participate, and so I'd like to make sure that, even though this looks like it is a good and fair price, pricing for the additional excess wind coverage, I just wanna make sure that everyone has the same chance to go through and do this. In talking to some people in the insurance agency, I think the recommendation next time is that we will procure a broker who will go out and look at the markets, and assign certain markets to certain people who are interested in bidding, and then that way, everybody has a chance to prepare a bid, and we'll make sure we do it with adequate preparation time, so that we can move forward and everyone has a participatory process in this.
Yeah, how do you eliminate this blocking situation from happening in the future?
Right.
Because, I mean, we don't have much of a choice, and it's kinda like by certain actions, they made us not have a choice.
Right, and that's where I wanted to go through and make sure we did the due diligence to make sure it was a fair price, and did check with a number of areas. And if we had a little more time, you know, I would say, let's go ahead and reopen this. But at this point, knowing the hurricane season is just right around the corner, if we want to make sure that we have that type of excess coverage, we probably should go ahead and proceed with this, and then, and typically, when we pick in our insurance agency, we'll keep them for three years, but this particular one, I'd like to rebid again next year.
I agree, I think, as long as we don't have it block next year. And if we were to rebid it, it would open for, we couldn't do it for 60 days, don't you say? It'd be 60, 80?
People need at least 60 to 90 days just to go through the process, and then it's also gonna take a little time to do the advertisement. Hurricane season officially is here June 1st, but there are instances as early as May, and even though usually the bigger hurricanes are later in the season, I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you when they're gonna hit.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I think our fiduciary duty as trustees doesn't allow us to leave properties uninsured. I don't think we can do that to the district either, unfortunately. Back on the TUIA, you're saying everything's equal, but Ms. Garza was addressing something about, are any of them from the taxing district? Everybody's local, it seems like everybody has local connections, but anybody from within our taxing district?
I don't think any of the agencies are homed within the taxing district. The Clement Agency has an association with an insurance agency that is within our taxing district, and the other two are from Harlingen, which are within our service territory.
But not our taxing district?
Harlingen is not in our taxing district.
We'd be happy to include them.
Mm-hmm. Then you'll have a care counselor.
That's a good point.
It doesn't matter to me which company we choose, really, if it's all the same, it doesn't matter to me, so.
It matters to me, I like to go local, if we can. I like to go within our taxing district.
I just kinda feel like there are so many changes so fast and furious, that I kinda lean toward just re-bid it out, staying with people who have already built up a relationship until we can sort of get our feet up there. We've got all these changes, and if we can move on to one relationship, and we can certainly bid it out, move it around, we have a hurricane season every year.
I think, I don't think it's that much of an issue as far as information-wise, I think they've already quoted it, they have all the information on the buildings, and it's already been quoted, I think now just matter binding it, which is not that serious.
Just to clarify, whenever we would go out for a TUIA bid, that would always be done by Texas Southmost College, and that's why we have an existing relationship with one of the agencies. However, no matter what, with the excess wind, we would have had a new provider, and that is because of the fact that we are not gonna participate with UT System pool on that section of the coverage.
I already said what I was gonna say.
Well, it's up for consideration, do we have a motion?
Only a motion that would go with our local entrance agent.
Which would be whom?
Which would be Clement?
The Clement Agency?
I've got a motion by Ms. Garza to select Clement Agency and authorize the President to execute a contract at approved terms and deductibles. Do I have a second? Can I ask, President, you said that the price would go back down to the same?
Once they make those adjustments for the categories, it would be priced exactly the same, yes.
Do we have a second? I have a second. I have a second by Mr. Mendez, do we have any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Dr. Lozano opposes, so three in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Before we finish this item, we also need to make a motion on the excess wind coverage.
Shepherd Walton.
Then we have a choice.
Well, we have a choice on the deductible amounts, and so we were recommending that we go at the 50 million amount.
Okay. And you were also, just for the record-
And you were also, just for the record, recommending the 1% on the previous?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the 1% deductible, I'm sorry, the $50 million excess coverage?
So, a motion for Mr. Mendez to approve Shepherd Walton King for the $50 million coverage, and authorize the President to execute a contract at approved terms and deductibles.
Aye.
Second by Dr. Lozano. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to say, Chairman, though, on that first one, if that bid doesn't go back down to the $827, would you please let us know?
Absolutely.
Next item, consideration approval of contracts for election services. I call on Mr. Chet Lewis, Vice President for Administration and Finance, to present the item. Mr. Lewis?
The item before you is to approve a lease of equipment with Cameron County. In prior years, the county has provided all the election services for us. However, this year, the only thing that we're going to be having a contract with them is for the leases of certain equipment. You have the contract in front of you, and the amount that we're looking at is $27,540, so this is going to be some of the various voting machines and the items we will need for the election, and we're asking for your approval.
Did you look at the amounts, and did you kind of do some checks on the prices, as far as what the lease amounts are?
On these amounts, this is cheaper than what we were originally looking at, and that is because these amounts, if we went on the market and leased them individually, it would be about 50% more. By law, when the county is leasing equipment, I believe they only can charge 10% above what their actual cost in the voter equipment is.
Okay.
I was, I'm sorry, sir, we have an agenda. Pardon? We have the agenda item. Okay, I'm sorry. Now, all I want to say is that, you know, I'm the other agent on TWIP. What occurred tonight is illegal. The gentleman making the presentation is not licensed for property casualty. He cannot stand up here and make a presentation, and it is illegal, okay? So, all I want to say is that what happened was not legal, because he's not licensed. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lewis, on the, back to the elections issue.
Yes.
We don't have the item on here, but we were looking for a consultant on that. Where do we stand on that?
Well.
Because I see Mr. Ortiz there, and I wonder if we could still recruit him to help us out?
I think we have some good news. We are in the process of working through a company that has, there's a gentleman who's been servicing the equipment at a former position, and he's now with another company, and that gentleman does the programming of the equipment, and also takes care of a lot of the coverage and the oversight to make sure everything goes smoothly on Election Day. He's been working in the area of Cameron County for quite a long time, is familiar with our elections, and the company also provides additional election services, and so he is working up a quote to help us with all the other aspects of putting on the election. And so, hopefully, we're going to get that quote for him shortly, and be able to have some additional help through our process.
So, at this point, we're looking for a motion to accept the lease agreement with Cameron County for the lease of election equipment and authorize the President to execute a contract.
Some more?
A motion by Mr. Mendez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Garza. Any discussion?
Just one more question again, is this, what is this looking like? Is this the same things that were familiar with you, or is it?
This is the exact same equipment that would have been previously used in other elections, and this is, if the county was providing services, the equipment they had been using. Okay.
Talk to me, please.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved.
Chairman, in regard to the issue that the other agency brought up, I have, Chet, just looking into that issue that you mentioned?
Absolutely.
If for some reason, there was some, something that's contrary to existing law, then we may have to have a special meeting to readdress it prior to the time that it's bound, so.
Okay.
Can you please?
I'll definitely look into that. Again, the person that made the proposal is the Clement Agency, and so, if there was an issue that somebody else got up here and spoke on that behalf, then we will address that, so I'll work this branch on that one.
We have consideration approval proposal for the Comprehensive Insurance Protection Plan through the inter-local agreement with TASB Risk Management Fund. Mr. Lewis?
As we had mentioned before, our fire and other appurts insurance was handled through UT System, and so we will need to have a new insurance policy in place for April 1st. One of the things that we thought, because we didn't have a bid proposal designed specifically for fire and other appurts, that we would go ahead and move forward with a, basically, insurance governmental pool that services school districts and community colleges. Currently, the TASB risk pool services approximately 10 other community colleges for fire and other appurts, and I believe that with their other policies there, they have, they services significant other amount of community colleges, so they're very familiar with the market. I also inquired about their reputation, and UT System has spoke very highly of them, and the other agents I spoke with also mentioned that, you know, they're very, have a very reputable reputation, I guess I'm being redundant there, within the state of Texas. So, what we have here?
Reputable or reputation?
Yeah, that's why, I said it was redundant, I admitted it.
They're very reputable.
Okay, it wasn't unreputable reputation, how's that? Our deductible before on fire and other appurts was significantly higher, but typically, when you're looking at policies that spit out through the market, they're usually at $50,000 or $100,000 deductibles, and like I said, we had, so this is actually more coverage than we had had previously. To cover the entire $235,000 of assets, which would be our buildings plus the contents, at a $50,000 deductible, the amount is $245,646. If we wanted to go at the $100,000 level, that would be $231,529. Our recommendation is to go ahead and put that at the $50,000 deductible level for the $245,646, and we also like you to, when you're accepting this recommendation, to approve Dr. Tercero to enter it into an inter-local agreement with the TASB risk pool.
The deductible you mentioned, does that include, is there vehicle coverage, like for security vehicles and?
Our vehicle coverage is actually separate, and right now Shepherd Walton King has the policy. One of the things to point out also, you know, this is a risk pool, there is a presumption that it is a fair price, but we also spoke with a number of other insurance agencies, including UT System, and did a comparable amount, and this, the advice I received is this is a fair pricing for this amount. And this is something also, if we want to go out in the future, we can, but I think at this point, this is a good opportunity to enter into this and pick up the coverage for April 1st.
Most risk pools give the opportunity to save quite a bit of money, but there's other legal ramifications later on if you have problems that kind of factor in, but I think it saves the district quite a bit of money.
Could you repeat the deductible you're recommending and the rate?
At this time, we're recommending that we enter into an agreement with the TASB risk pool in an inter-local agreement, and to allow us to participate in the pool, and that we go with the deductible per occurrence of $50,000 for the fire and other apparel for the annual contribution of $245,646.
That $245,000, how does that compare to last year's budget?
That compares favorable. Some of the other insurance agencies identified some amounts in different areas, and the pricing seems like it's a fair price. Obviously, if we haven't done a comparison, we don't have the other bids to look at, but using the advice, I felt very comfortable with this amount.
So, we're looking for a motion to approve the proposal from TASB Risk Management Fund to provide property casualty coverage and authorize the President to execute a contract with a $50,000 deductible at a rate of $245,000. What else was it, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
$245,000, how much?
$646.
Oh, I was jumping ahead to the next agenda item. $245,646.
Listen to Mr. Mendez, he's tense.
It's actually your packet.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Which floor? I couldn't find it. Searching the wrong.
Tap floor.
Anyway, do I have a motion for that?
Some more?
I have a second.
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Mendez. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Next item, consideration approval of budget amendments for fiscal year 2012. Mr. Lewis?
We have two items for the budget amendments. The first is to recognize the sale of the brick that the board approved several months before. The total amount of the proceeds are $186,690. We are recognizing that in the facility fund, and then reducing the corresponding transfer into the facility fund from our general fund. The second amount is a small amount of $2,025. We found that there was an invoice related to one of the bond projects that had not been paid. We did confirm that it was due, and so, in order to make the payment, we need to make sure we have the amount put into the budget.
How do you just find a statement that hasn't been paid? That happens at home, but it shouldn't happen here.
It was sent forward again, and apparently, whenever they had sent it the first time, I'm not sure where that went. It happened probably over a year ago, and, but they said we did do our due diligence, and it was an amount owed.
We have to pay it.
Yes.
So, we're looking to approve the Budget Amendments Number 12-003 for fiscal year 2012, as presented by Mr. Lewis?
Some more?
Motion by Ms. Garza, second by Dr. Lozano. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Report on TSE Transition Team. I call on Dr. Leonardo De La Garza, TSE Consultant, to give the report. Dr. De La Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Tercero, I wish to provide you a brief report on the activities of the transition team. First item has to do with the schedule on negotiations for campus facilities with UT System. There has been agreement to a May-June timeframe for conducting the actual negotiations with UT System. This schedule accommodates the continued assessment of the inventory of campus facilities by the TSE team. We touched on this briefly the last time with the consultants who are actually doing that, and it's a work in progress, close to completion, but this will allow that to be completed. Thirdly, this schedule accommodates the appropriate involvement by Dr. Tercero of the Board of Trustees, who, of course, will need to approve any actions regarding what happens with college facilities as regards to ownership or divesting of any of those facilities. Excuse me. Finally, a date of April 16th has been agreed upon for a transition team meeting for developing the negotiations process, which, of course, will have a discussion about the products of that process, and the schedule of negotiations starting on April 16th. This will be a meeting in Austin at the UT Systems office. The second item I will report to you has to do with something we touched upon last month, and that is that there is now confirmation of a SACS planning activity meeting. You will recall that we mentioned that Dr. Tercero and Aguero will travel to Atlanta and will be attending planning sessions with SACS official on a date that has now been designated as April 11th and 12th. This will confirm the SACS approved timeline to include TSE to become fully operational, you will recall, by the fall of 2013, and, which is necessary for the college to achieve full accreditation again by the date that's been mentioned over and over, August 31, 2015. The actual opportunity for the college to become fully operational means that the college will be able to offer instruction, have all the support services to do that, in order to comply with SACS requirements, that you prove your ability to operate the college and do it effectively and efficiently. And so, that's the importance of having the actual fall of 2013 fully operational timeline. Dr. Tercero?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, that will occur under the existing accreditation, which is the UTV-TSE accreditation. Both entities, as you may well know, are still under that accreditation, UTV as TSE, but we have the opportunity to move forward with our operations, just to clarify.
Yes, and that's very, very important to note, the actual accreditation continues under the UTV-TSE accreditation by SACS until the separation in 2015.
But there's no, there's no risk that UT will be accredited and TSE won't?
No, the accreditation is an accreditation of both institutions at the end of the separation. Should there be an issue, which we certainly don't anticipate, then the accreditation would continue for both institutions under the TSE-UTV partnership accreditation that is bestowed by SACS, until such time as both institutions are separately accredited.
I think the statute itself provides a safeguard for that within the statute to where that's not, that's not going to happen.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, report on tuition and fees. I call on Dr. Lily Tercero, President of Texas Southmost College, to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. There we go. I'm pleased to provide to you this afternoon, or this evening, actually, I guess, a report on the tuition and fees across the state of Texas in regard to community colleges. It's an issue that we will be looking forward to discussing with you in the next few months, and I will have final conclusions at the end of this report, but basically, it's, this is a very important element in our planning process, particularly in regard to the financial aspect, and to what we will be able to provide to our students. So, I thought that this would be a really good idea for us to go through and review this. I start with the overall perspective of the state. When you look at it, and all of this is just the community colleges, when you look at the Texas Community College State Average, and I'm looking at spring, which is the latest, you will note here that we, for, the blue is the in-district tuition rate statewide, the red are the out-of-district rates.
Per credit hour, right?
Yes, sir. This is for semester, semester credit hour. If you notice down here on my note, it's tuition and fees totals calculated for a student enrolled for 12 semester credit hours. Then the green one is the non-resident, non-resident Texas or out-of-state individuals, always higher. But when we look at the in-district, what you note is that the in-district and the actually out-of-district tuition rates have increased about 24% between 2009 and '12. When you look at the out-of-district tuition rates, the red one, they've increased by about 26%. The majority of the increases, you will note, actually took place between the '11 and '12 fiscal years. That's when the big jump occurred in actually all the areas, from $66 to $73 per in-district. That is basically about an, almost an 11% increase. A lot of it had to do, I believe, with what was happening at the state level, with the appropriations, state appropriations, and... And a lot of community colleges had to take action in order to address the lack of state funding and the changes that had occurred at that place. But overall, there has been some increases. And I think it's, again, as I say, it's related to this, the big component of our state appropriations dollars. I went farther and decided to give you a breakdown by each area, which we start off with the in-district. This is from highest to lowest in regard to the semester credit hours. Again, it's for a 12 credit hours a semester. And the ranking and the individual colleges that are included here, except for South Texas, are within what the Texas Education Committee Board has identified as the peer group. They entitled large community colleges. There are four different levels, a very large, a large, a medium, and a small. And so here is, we fall within the large category based on the existing enrollment numbers of about 11,000, 10,000 something, almost 11,000. So UTV-TSC is currently ranked number one, having the highest tuition rate, total of semester credit hour of $208. The average, state average, is 73. This basically tells us that it, our, the UTV-TSC tuition and fees are almost three times the state average. And when we look at a comparison of UTV and South Texas College, which is our closest community college near us, we're looking at about UTV-TSC having almost double those at South Texas College right here. All the others are closer to the state average. When we look at out-of-district, you see UTV is ranked second here. The number one is actually Austin Community College. They have a higher rate for out-of-district. I think part of their strategy there has been is that they have been looking to annex a lot of their areas around there. And I think that that was, may have been one of their strategies, just a guess. But then you go down and you see the others are, the average, state average is 112, ours is 208. South Texas is actually the same as the state average in this case right here. An important note here to make is that UTV-TSC currently does not have a different, a differential between in-district and out-of-district tuition at this time. Normally, or at least on the state average, what you find is that if you look at this number here and then look at this number here, which is the in-district, that's about a 53% difference. And so that's what you normally see in community colleges. Students that are within the district, basically paying taxes, have a lower tuition rate that they have to pay as compared to those students that are outside of the taxing district. And that's the normal among all community colleges. The non-resident tuition, you will note here, UTV-TSC is at 521. The average is 163 per semester credit hour. A very big difference there. Again, it's about three times higher than the state average and about two times higher than the, that at South Texas College, which is right here.
That non-resident, is that international students?
That would include anybody outside of the state of Texas. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, another important comparison, as I was going through the process, I went over to look at what UT Pan American students were paying. And for spring 12, UTV students taking 12 semester credit hours are paying almost as much as students at UT Pan American. A very little, little difference there. And similar numbers actually for the Texas A&amp;M at Kingsville. I didn't put this information here, but they were about $3,000 for residents and about $6,768 for non-residents. The findings, based on the research that we did, as you noted, most likely, as we went through this presentation, UTV-TSC has the highest in district and non-resident tuition and fees among all the 50 community colleges. We're the second highest in regard to out-of-district, behind only Austin Community College, and they're at 215. And our, the tuition and fees of UTV-TSC are more closely aligned with those of regional universities than Texas public community colleges. So that's an area that we will be looking at, as you see here, in terms of our next steps. We will be looking at new tuition and fee tables as we, as we work through this financial modeling. We'll be examining options for you to review. We will bring forth those tables, which will have two separate tables. We will have an in-district tuition and fees table as well as an out-of-district tuition and fees table. And we'll bring that forth to you this coming fall so that we can prepare ourselves for the opening of the college in the fall of 13. We'll be bringing this forth by the spring. We will be able to prepare our own catalog. We will have our own TSC catalog. We will have our own tables and everything in regard to that. And that's where you will see these differences as we move forward. And again, they'll all be contingent upon what we'll be doing in the next few months. So with that, I'd be glad to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, on the timeline, on the timeline, what you're explaining to us is that we'll be able to let the public know what our future tuition and fees will be for the first semester that we will operate autonomously?
Yes, sir. We will bring forth to you in the fall of this year, a recommendation. So we, once you approve it, we will be, it'll be, we can announce it, people will know. And it's wonderful, because you'll be, they'll be able to start planning for the coming fall semester. It'll be effective fall 13, but they will know. And I think that's a very important aspect. We also need to have that information so that we can include it in our catalog. And we need some time so we can work through the spring to get that catalog prepared.
I think this is an issue that's really important to the board, because many of us ran on that issue during the campaign. So I'd like to maybe form a subcommittee to help in the review process. I don't know if anybody's interested in doing that.
I'll be interested.
Yeah. I think most of the probably. Exactly what?
Say, say again, Dr. Lozano?
No, I was just saying, reviewing exactly what we need.
The review process of how we're going to analyze the new tuition rate and where.
Maybe I should suggest maybe we do a workshop.
We can do that. We can have a workshop. We will be actually holding several workshops with you in the next few months, Kim and I. Once we come back from the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools visit, we will have that timeline. And I've been working with Kim and letting her know that we will be needing to set up some workshops. But I didn't want to do that until we got the final visit from SACS, at least to get more confirmed what we've got set up and see if they bless it kind of for us.
Well, I mean, I was just trying to, you know, two new board members and people that need to be kind of educated.
But I think a subcommittee would be important, because then you can, you can add some people from the community, you can add some people from BISB.
Well, maybe we can do a combination. We can do a subcommittee to review now, and then we'll do the workshops when we have the new board members after the May elections. I think that might be a good way to do it.
As long as we get them lowered, it doesn't matter how we get them.
Well, the subcommittee.
We have, we do have a lot of work that still lays ahead in the next few months as we move toward really doing the analysis of the financial situation and the modeling that we're going to have to do to say, if we bring the tuition to this point, you know, what does that mean for the college in regard to state appropriation dollars? And what does that mean in regard potentially to increases in enrollment, which will offset some of the costs, the reduction in the cost of tuition? So there's a lot of scenarios we will have to do as staff to prepare that four-year review. So just know that that's a lot of work we're still having to do. And we want to be sure that what we bring forth to you is as accurate as possible. We do not want to bring something forth to you in a rush. Rather, plan it out properly. I know some people say, you know, you know, maybe I'm taking too much time, but I don't think we are. I think we're being very, very strategic and very deliberate in what we're doing. And I think in the long run, it will serve us and serve this institution very well.
Will we be ready for a workshop by June?
Oh, yes, sir. Actually, it'll be before June. We were looking, we'll be coming back from, on the 12, from, in April, from visiting with the accreditation people. By then, we should have a feel exactly what they want us to do. And we were thinking of setting one up probably in May. And to tell you the truth, I hope, I hope you don't get upset, we will have several workshops. Because as we go through the negotiations period in the summer, Dr. Garza pointed out that we're looking at May-June, it may, May-June-July, we will have to be coming back to you, which means we'll likely have to schedule some retreats, some special meetings with you as we talk with the transition team and we come back and we say, what do you think about this plan? And we need your blessing and your approval.
Dr. Tercero, you don't know this, but in the past boards, we don't work in July.
Oh, then we're going to have to take care of them.
That has not been true since I've been on the board.
Uh-oh. Perhaps? We did.
We had to last month.
Would you consider taking an exception? Oh, no.
We all went to a meeting out of district.
Well, we'll do what we can to avoid that. To respect.
I'm okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would like the subcommittee, Ms. Garza and Mr. Mendez and Dr. Lozano, would you be interested?
Why don't you go ahead and participate in that, knowing you have three board members as opposed to four? Would you?
Yeah. Well, I'm giving you the choice if you want to go.
Go ahead.
I'll do it, okay. And then we'll look for end of, probably middle or end of May?
Yes, sir.
For the first workshop on the topic?
The workshop's going to be a board workshop.
It'll be a full board workshop. We'll have other items to bring forth to you, including program review information, things like that. We have quite a bit of materials to bring forth to you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Don't leave, Dr. Tercero. You need to, for the annual report of the TSC Foundation?
Oh, yes, sir. I would like to table that item for tonight. We have been working with the chairman of the foundation, and I would like to ask if you could just postpone it, that we're not able to be here. And I'd like to continue working and visiting with them. We'll reschedule that.
If it's not an action item, do I need a vote to table? No? So we just, next item, executive session, the board will convene in executive session as provided by Government Code, Chapter 551.071 and 551.072. We now reconvene from executive session. There is no action from the executive session, so we move on to item number 15, adjournment and announcement of the next meetings. We have a meeting date of April 19, 2012, and a meeting date of May 17, 2012. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yes, sir.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.